Mr. Martin, would you read it?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Serinski.
Here.
All present.
Motion to approve the minutes from June 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Kirksey to the floor, if there's anyone here. If not, we are going to move on. Mr. McClure, do you have a report?
Unless you have any questions, I don't have a report.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McClure? Okay. Oh, business. Public hearing on an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the 2023 Northampton County Council Budget Department Fiscal Affairs Court Administration Department of Public Works and Department of Human Services." Ms. Serinski and Mrs. Giovanni introduced this. Are there any questions?
No.
From the public? Okay. Questions from anybody on council? Mr. Kuzic.
May I ask Mr. Barron a couple of questions?
You sure can.
Thank you. Sure. So, first question, we're increasing our interest on investment from $100,000 to $848,100. Are we getting such great interest rates now? How is it?
You can thank the Federal Reserve, 10 straight meetings from the last one for interest rates. Our Crem accounts are doing very, very well. That's what our interest is projected to be. We didn't expect that many rate increases, much less the ability to get that money on our Crem accounts. I mean, a regular savings account is about 4.5%, depending on where you invested in.
What did we anticipate we would be getting?
Well, the original budget number was what?
$100,000.
And now we're up to what?
$848,000.
It's, it's, it is about that much.
So where should people invest?
On the record.
On the record. Our, our Crem accounts are doing very well, and that's governed by state law. So, we are only allowed to invest in guaranteed return, high interest, or I mean, a high, low-risk corporate paper. That's it.
All right, then the next question I had was for the Human Services Area Agency on Aging. We are deleting our federal contribution and using American Rescue Plan money. Why are we doing that, and how much American Rescue Plan money do we have left?
So, right now, on the American Rescue Plan money, there's $1 million unallocated. Okay? So, this money is human services money that was American Rescue Plan money that came in from the state. It was not specific money that we had control over. So, it was money that was brought in from the state. So, we accepted the money for specific programs and funding that didn't come from the regular block grant. So, it came in under a different line item. The federal money, the $500,000, was promised in the beginning of the year. Based on the block grant, you move a little bit of that money around. So, we ended up getting more money, but it came in from the American Rescue Plan, and we have to account for that money differently. So, since we didn't get the federal funds which would come on our single audit, we had to move that money around to make it right for the single audit. So, we had to amend our budget.
Okay. Then the other big one, the IGT for Gracemont. We had budgeted 20,000, almost 21 million, and it's coming in at 32.4. What's the, the reason for the, I mean, it's $11.5 million?
Again, the interest rates. So, they're leveraging a lot more money that they pulled in. The other thing is, we don't, we have an estimated amount from the state. So, when we enter into the IGT program, when we pass the budget in the beginning of the year, we use last year's number and the estimate we get from the state to determine what that's going to be. At mid-year, they know where their investments are when we put the money forward and we sign the ultimate contract. So, we had to send the IGT money in, and that's the amount of money we're going to get back based on what we sent in. So, we have a good idea what that number's going to be when we do the budget. We send the money out, and then they tell us what our, our investment is going to bring back. So, our money comes back plus the interest. So, that's how that works. So, when they give us that estimated interest, we amend the budget every year. It usually goes up, but this year it's much higher than, and it stands out.
That's what I wanted to know. Why is it that much higher, and you believe it's just because of higher interest rates?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's good news if you have money in the bank. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? All right, let's call for the votes.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for an Amendment to Northampton County Council Home Rule Charter, Article 2, County Council, to Provide Term Limits for Members of County Council of Northampton." Ms. Faru Hefner? Any questions?
I don't have to read it yet. This is the public hearing, right?
Public hearing. No. Yes, Tara?
Thank you. I was at the meeting last night, but I was on the phone, and I didn't comment. But, in listening to the discussion, I had a lot of reservations about these ordinances that are coming up, and I'll just talk about them generally. I really feel that while referendums seem like a direct tool of democracy, that we can't just say yes or no when there is some nuance inherent to the question that we're asking. And the question that we're asking is, should there be term limits? Right? Now, there are already kind of term limits in place, since every time a voter elects or re-elects an official, they are saying whether or not they believe that person should continue on another term. I think that in the Lehigh Valley, we have lots of individuals who have served more than two terms, more than three terms. If you look at Hawn, Emmerich, Boscola, Samuelson, Freeman, if you look at some of the members, even Mr. Kuzic has served, I believe, three, right?
This is my fourth.
Oh, this is your fourth, right? So, you've served four terms, and yet you would vote to limit the terms of anybody coming in the future. So, I think also having this, in this primary election, or, or not in this primary, but in this general election coming up, and kind of fast-tracking these referendums and pushing them on here, we have to look at what the turnout is. If we want the voters to speak, the, in 2020, the general election for president, the turnout was 76%. In 2022, the midterm election turnout was 32%. This past primary, and in a primary where there was a highly contested DA race, where school boards were on, on, school board positions were on the line, where books could be banned, teachers could be armed, things that are very important to people, we only got 20% of the voters to turn out. So, if you put a referendum on for this election, I believe it will not be true democracy in allowing the voters to speak, because turnout will be generally low. I think the idea that a candidate only having two terms, and then actually serving a gap, and then serving another, actually belies the whole intent of term limitations. And so, I just don't understand why we don't let the voters decide, like they always do, two elections a year, whether or not they want somebody to be in a position, or whether they don't, whether they want to vote, whether they want to come out. It really is, I think, that is what a representative democracy is. Because if you pass these resolutions, we might not get the outcome, or you might not get the outcome you intend, but you definitely will be limiting any future voter from deciding what term limits to give somebody maybe they like, maybe somebody who's doing a good job. And so, I will be voting all these down, and I will also recuse myself from control, from voting on the one where the controller is on the line. Mr. Spadonia and I did have a conversation about this. He does not feel that it's a conflict of interest, because there is no material advantage or gain. But I feel ethically that I don't want to vote on the term limitation for an office that I am running for. So, thank you for allowing me that time.
Anybody else? Yes. We had an exhaustive debate last night. I think we'd all agree. I just want to say, I received a, a phone call today, and I had to shut it down. And I mentioned this to a couple of people about praising, or actually thanking me for, for not wanting to vote in favor of this at this time, and then proceeded to attack a couple of people who are in favor of this. And I, I, I said, just, that's enough. Look, I'm gonna vote the way I vote tonight because of how I feel on a specific policy at this particular time. It has nothing to do with the personalities involved, or the people involved. I, I know that's the fad now in government, but I refuse to go down that road, and voters can, can judge based on, on that stance I take. I don't think there's anything wrong with these ordinances. I explained yesterday why I, I have qualms about them at this time. But I would like to say this, that, as I said to the individual I spoke to, the former clerk of council and I are good friends, no one is irreplaceable. This county will go on for years after everyone in this room is gone, and it'll probably be doing just fine, if maybe even better. So, I mean, I think we do want to get away from cults of personalities. There's, that's, the local governance meaningless. I believe that the charter as it's written is good in the sense that you have five people up here who vote, and if need be, six. And they'll, they'll make a decision, that's governance, if you have an executive branch where decisions are made by one person. And that makes it efficient, and it runs well running the county. But this is governance, and I think if five or six people agree on something, even though we're all different parties or from different points of view, then it's probably the way the writers intended it to go. So, I want to be clear, because I'm not going to accept flowers for something that I'm not doing. I, I'm, this isn't about anybody personally up here or out there. This is about looking at the policy and making a decision, and I, I just want to say that I think it's, it's a mistake if we attack any individuals over this for just doing their job. Everyone has a right to their opinion, and that's why we, I think we were elected because of that. And the day we feel we don't have a right to our opinion, well, then that, that's where it doesn't matter what we pass. That's it. Thank you. Mr. Kuzic.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to offer an amendment to the ordinance, and that would be under Section B to January of 2024. And under Section 205 on the second page, to delete the last sentence. It says, "The limitation imposed by this section shall not apply to terms previously served by current members of County Council, who shall, for purposes of this section, only be deemed to be serving their first term."
Excuse me, sorry.
Are you done?
That was my motion.
There's one more word.
What was that?
During his versus during the term of office, on the very bottom of the page.
And I'd also like to change that word from his to the.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second?
Are you talking about the last sentence? From their first term? Because we're eliminating that sentence.
No. I'm talking about, it's on the very bottom of the front page where it says, "And during his."
Oh, okay.
It should state the instead of his.
Okay.
And then he's deleting that last line. Is it also on, and which he, and which they were elected? Do you accept that amendment?
Yes, yes. You can add that.
So I have a second?
Yes.
Can I, can I just add that maybe you make a blanket statement that all of the pronouns are gender neutral? Because there's several pronouns in here, not just the two. There's he, her, him.
Yesterday, we were told we had to amend today and go through.
Yes, so you amended, there's actually, there's he, his, and he. So, if you just make a blanket statement to say that all of them are gender neutral, I think that will cover all the bases. That's all.
Oh, there's another one. They were, instead of he was elected.
Yeah. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so she's saying make it gender neutral.
Gender neutral in every section.
In every section. Just a blanket statement.
Go ahead, you have a second on that? If there's a motion from?
This is the motion, the complete motion, right? Is to make those changes.
Yes.
So that was John, and then Lori second.
And then Tara came in and added?
We're just changing, it's all one motion.
Okay.
That was just the conversation, yeah.
May I ask, go ahead. Could you read now the amended, just that section, the entire section that was amended?
Section, well, for Section B, we just added the date. For Section 205, it should read, "Each member elected by district shall have resided in the district from which..."
They were.
"They were elected continuously during the preceding, during, I'm sorry, during this year preceding the commencement, commencement of the term of office, and during..."
The.
"...the term of office shall reside continuously in the district from which they were elected." "Any member of County Council shall not serve more than three, four-year terms in succession."
And that's it?
And then the last sentence is, is deleted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Discussion? No discussion? We're gonna vote on the amendment.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to one.
Okay, now we're gonna vote on the orders, on the ordinance as amended. Okay? We're gonna vote on the ordinance as amended. Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Lot.
No.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of six to three.
Now, we're gonna have, which one did I do? Public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for an Amendment to the Northampton County Council Home Rule Charter, Article 2, County Council, Provide Term Limits for Members of County Council on the County of Northampton." It was introduced by Ms. Faru Hefner or Mr. Giovanni?
Nope.
No? Am I on the wrong one?
Maybe, I don't know.
On number three?
I don't know where I am.
Okay. I'm sorry. Public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for an Amendment to the Northampton County Council Home Rule Charter, Article 3, County Exec, to Provide Term Limits for the Office of County Exec of the County of Northampton." It was introduced by Mr. Giovanni and Mr. Myers. Discussion or comment? Mr. Kuzic.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance. Under Section B, change it to January of 2026. Under Section 304, change it to during the term. So, strike his and replace it with the term. And then, on the next page and paragraph two, it should read, "No person shall be elected to the Office of County Executive more than twice in succession." Period. And then delete the balance of that paragraph. From and to once.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni, uh, Mr. Gofredo. Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to one.
That was the amendment.
That was the amendment.
The motion passed.
Motion to amend passed.
The motion to amend passed. Now, to amend, right. Right, now we're gonna vote on the ordinance as amended. Correct?
Yep.
Any discussion? If not?
Did we amend the gender in this one?
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Okay, just checking, because it says his, but then it says person.
Any change?
Just making sure.
Yes, he did. Any other discussion or questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Lot.
No.
Ordinance is adopted by a vote of six to three.
Public hearing, public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for an Amendment to the Northampton County Council, County Home Rule Charter, Article 4, Controller, to Provide Term Limits for the Controller of the Northampton County." Discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment, propose an amendment to this ordinance. The date would be 2024. And Section B, Section 1, under B, would be 2024, January of 2024. Section 104.
401.
401, thank you. I'm just looking for pronouns. During the term of office. And that's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion? We're gonna vote on the amendment. Call for a vote.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
No. I mean, I abstain, sorry.
Abstain?
I'm just remaining consistent.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to one abstention.
Okay, now we're gonna vote on the, the ordinance as amended. And if there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
Abstain.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Lot.
No.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of six to two with one abstention.
New business. Introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of Northampton County Council Authorizing the Purchase of a Trail and Easement Containing 0.497 Acres More or Less As Determined by the Survey of Real Property in the Borough of Bath, Pennsylvania, from the Bath Borough Authority by the County of Northampton." I need someone to sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
Who's second?
Second.
Okay. This will be introduced at the July 6th meeting. Consideration of a, of County Exec Appointment, Reappointment Resolution, Area on Aging Advisory Council Resolution for Children and Youth Family Advisory and Workforce Lehigh Valley. Ms. Faru Hefner, would you introduce a resolution?
Okay. Let's see. I'm not sure what order to do this in. Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments or reappointments as indicated hereafter. Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, Ann Anderson, Easton, PA; Ginger DeBias, Easton, PA; Sandra Volcano, Easton, PA, term to expire 6/30/25. Reappointments to same board, Elaine Arntz, Easton, PA; Yolanda Braun, Easton, PA; Gladys Marie Harris, Easton, PA; Paul Nagy, Hellertown, PA; and Robert Pretapapa, Bethlehem, PA, term to expire 6/30/25. Children and Youth Board, Advisor, and Families Advisory Board, appointment, Sandra Stewart-Berett, Nazareth, PA, term to expire 5/1/25. Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, reappointments of Nancy Dino and Maria Antonia Mittman, both of Easton, PA, terms to expire 6/30/25. The Workforce Board, Lehigh Valley Appointment, 1A Small Business, Rebecca Anderson Nowery, Easton, PA, term to expire 6/30/26. Reappointments, B4 Organization, Joseph Kovalchek, Northampton, PA, term to expire 6/30/2025. E-Optional, Debbie Rice, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, same term. A Business, Jane Brooks, Easton, PA, term to expire 6/30/26. A Business, also Michael Woodland, Nazareth, PA. Labor, terms to expire 6/30/2027. Paul Anthony of Bethlehem, PA; James Irwin of Nazareth, PA; and A1 Small Business, John McDonald, Bethlehem, PA; A1 Small Business, also David Wolf, Easton, PA. I have an announcement, I guess, that there was a discussion yesterday about who was eligible to be on boards and any conflicts, and as of today, I received two resignations that were presented to Mr. McClure. James Irwin has resigned his position on the Northampton County Personnel Appeals Board, and Michael Lichtenberger resigned his appointment to the Personnel Hearing Board, and he will continue to serve on the Lanta Board.
Any questions? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Consideration of Personnel Request Resolution District Attorney's Office. Ms. Varu Hefner, would you read the resolution?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the two full-time positions of Deputy District Attorney, Pay Grade C E G R dash oh four one A, salary $78,784, shall be upgraded to Pay Grade C E G R dash oh four two B, salary $82,329 in the District Attorney's Office effective June 16th, 2023. The DA was here yesterday and discussed this at the personnel meeting.
Any discussion, discussion or questions? Call for vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot. Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Consideration of Long- Longevity Incentive Bonus Office of the District Attorney. Ms. Varu Hefner, would you read that for us, please?
I will read part of it. Whereas District Attorney's Office seeks to award longevity incentive bonuses to 13 of their professional staff who have taken on significant additional caseloads and job assignments to cover for our temporary professional personnel shortage. And whereas the 2023 budget for the District Attorney, as approved by County Council, is sufficient to cover the proposed additional compensation to all of the prosecutors who have taken on significant additional caseloads. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Northampton County Council approves the payment of a one-time $3,000 longevity incentive bonus to each of the 13 Assistant District Attorneys as identified by the District Attorney from the 2023 District Attorney's Budget. Again, he was here yesterday. He outlined and presented the folks that were going to be receiving this. And he stated he had enough money in his budget to do so.
Discussion? If not, let's call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Consideration of Administrative Code Article 13 Contract Resolution, Bill Bittler, Electric CMG of Easton JBM Mechanics HK Group Incorporated Keystone Consulting Engineers. Mr. Kuzic, would you read those for us, please? Because Mr., uh, Mr. Heckman forgot his glasses. I didn't get my new reading. And you were doing them yesterday.
Sure. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the County Executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Billatier Electric, CMs, CMG of Easton and JBM Mechanical. Total of three contracts worth $562,399.
Let's go with Bill Littler first, discussion. If not, anybody had questions on that, discussed yesterday? Call for vote.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
HK Group, Mr. Kuzic.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton County does hereby concur with the recommendation of the County Executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve the contract with H&amp;K Group Incorporated. And the contract is for the amount of $87,286 for the Gracel Avenue repaving project.
That was discussed yesterday at committee meetings. Any questions? Call for vote.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Keystone Consulting Engineers, Mr. Kuzic.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the County Executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Keystone Consulting Engineers. The amount of the contract is for $153,000 for the Habitat for Habitat for Humanity of the Lehigh Valley, Crestlarsville Road Residential Development Project.
That was discussed yesterday, and Mr. Barron, and told us exactly what's going on. Any questions on that? Can we have a vote, please?
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Do we have any other new businesses we need to discuss at this time? If not, we will go to council committee reports. Ms. Varu Hefner.
Yesterday, we held our Personnel Committee, and the fruits of our labor were completed today. We also held a Governance Committee meeting. Most of what we talked about was done here today. The gift ban ordinance will be presented in two weeks at the council meeting, as well as a discussion regarding the Home Rule Charter Study and the sheriff position. It was determined that the sheriff position could not be taken on at this time because it really needs to be part of a larger home rule study. Because it would require a change in government. The council decided at this time that it was not going to open the door to a home rule charter study. And, and that is the will of council. We also discussed creating a DA position, term limit to be consistent with what we did today. And that will be presented at our next meeting.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Thank you. We had an Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting today where we discussed the Norbath Trail Easement, which we voted on, and updates on a lot of our parks. Because it's halfway through the year, late Mincy, 75 to 85% complete in what they're doing up there in the parking, Louise Moore Park. We're getting 50 people at a time to play pickleball. That is just amazing. And the Colonial bathrooms are going to be completed very soon. We're just waiting on Med Ed to cut the power. And the windmill will be ready the 1st of July. And Yituk Park is getting, talking about removing some of the dead ash trees. We had a great discussion on the Emerald Ash Bore and the proper removal of ash trees so as not to spread the pest. And the True Rivers Trail contract is coming through. There's a lot of stuff going on. And everybody should like and follow Norco Parks and Trails on Facebook to keep up.
Mr. Gofredo.
The Econo- or the Capital Projects Committee met to go over a litany of projects that are ongoing and getting started here this spring. A lot of them will be getting done this summer. Gracel, they are doing the daycare, the government building, they're doing the retaining wall replacement, parking deck repairs, which unfortunately will be a temporary repair, and a larger project may be in the conversation in the next coming years. The parks, Louise Moore Park, the tennis courts are complete, the pickleball courts are complete. Bathrooms, windmill, windmill is ongoing, they're starting in the next couple of weeks. There's a lot, a lot going on, and we had a very productive meeting. I, I do recommend, if people are curious, to listen to that meeting because there's probably about 15 or 15 or 20 items that were on that meeting.
Along with the bridges.
Yeah, and the bridges are.
Bridges.
You know, an ongoing thing still. Two are set to start, the Lower Salkin Township, spring start. And the Bushkill Township is still out to bid, and they're hoping to start sometime in the end of this year.
Is there anyone else? Liaison reports. Mr. Gofredo.
The Conservation District met on Tuesday night. They voted to, to get an EIN number from the state and to open up a bank account so that they can be eligible for some grants through the state. I think Grow Greener is the big one that they're going after, along with a few others. They also would like to come in front of council, whether it be through EELU or to a council meeting to discuss. They still don't have an engineer, which they're in desperate need of, and a couple of other issues that they would like to present to council.
They're always welcome at any ELU meeting.
Why don't they have an engineer? What's the holdup?
They believe that they do not have a competitive salary. And then, they showed me Class III salaries. We are at the lower end of the Class III salaries in the state. They have some suggestions and recommendations of how they would like to go about it. So, I'd like them to come here, talk to all of us about it as well. Mr. Dirtinger.
I think Mr. Dirtinger is going to address something.
Yeah. We actually have an MOU to handle these things, many of these things for them, that MOU is entered into in 2020, if you'd be interested.
They would also like to talk about renegotiating their MOU.
The, um, the issue of the engineer has had a lot of stories told about it. Our engineer was looking to work from home. He took a position with Lehigh County, who offered him an opportunity to work from home. He had been with us for several years prior to the pandemic. And when he was given an opportunity to work from home, that's what he took. It was not a matter of salary. He'd been with us for quite some time before that. It was just the opportunity to be with his family and not have to come in was the issue that he had, we eventually saw on that. The, um, the circumstances are, Northampton County puts a lot of money into the Conservation District, for which is why we negotiated a circumstance which we would be handling the monies and dealing with. We've had, you know, the most recent, and unfortunate, but the most recent report we got from the Controller did have a couple of money handling issues at the Conservation District and things that we'd like to keep tighter. And that's one of the reasons why, in the MOU, their money flows through the fiscal office and not independently. They're not an independent group. They, they, is of course, an opportunity, and certainly something that was talked about three years ago, for them to be just like Lehigh County and be an independent Conservation District. That's certainly something that we would be open to, if that's a direction that they had wanted to go. But much of what they are trying to do is, and we've had meetings, we've discussed these things. They had a lot of misconceptions, certainly from when I was the liaison to Conservation District. They've always believed that the county takes money from them, or it's, at the end of the year, when we settle out the bu- the, the budget, they feel like we're taking their money, but it's just replacing the money that we had put up for them. And part of that MOU indicates that they should seek the grants to be self-sufficient. To this day, they're nowhere near that. They pay no rent, we take care of the vehicles for them. Their insurances, their fringe benefits, their salaries. Some of their salaries are paid, but their longer range salary implications are covered by the county. So, there is a lot of things that are perception and reality based. And we did have a very productive conversation about what perceptions were and what the realities were, I guess, about a month ago.
Yeah, well, they, I, that's why I want them to come here, because it's hard to get caught up to speed by attending a meeting a month. But it seems like they want to discuss the MOU because they feel like, especially as far as the bookkeeping goes, that they aren't able to do their jobs to the best of their ability because they aren't getting the information that they need to keep their books appropriately.
That's entirely, they get the information as, as it becomes available. They get the, they, they did not ask for some of this information. They now have a new treasurer. The treasurer, who had been there for 40 some odd years, has recently resigned the board after many years of service. And we thank him for that. But the new treasurer doesn't understand how these things are working. And I think much of this is confusion rather than not getting what they need.
That's exactly why I want them to come. We could all discuss it, look at it, and make sure all parties are happy.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Is the, the lack of an engineer delaying permitting?
No. They're, they're permitting, they have delegation agreements with other engineering, and some, much, some of that is now taking place through DEP.
But John, um, so, they have agreements with, I believe, Monroe and Lehigh County, but there's no obligation for either of those counties to take the workload if they feel they are, you know, filled up with their workload. So, there are points in time where they might be without an engineer. At least, that's what they are.
We were, we were, yeah, and there were points in time when we were without an engineer, with our engineer having taken paternity, uh, paternity time as well as other times away. Not the least of which, our 102 delegation is not that old. We have only had an engineer at the Conservation District for, I want to say, it was, it was the one engineer, and it's only been, I think, five or seven years. So, this is something that is not, um, to be considered a standard in, in Northampton County. It's, it's something that's, that is new and not something that is necessary.
That was not the impression I got. That's why, like I said.
Well, yeah, no, I.
Liaison, I, I'm not going to be able to tell you how necessary it is.
Sure, I, I appreciate that. I, I started there in, in 2005 myself, and I've been working as liaison or over, dealing with the, the office directly as it's part of my budget.
Understood. Thank you.
So, what, answer, go ahead.
Is the salary truly an issue? Were they getting applications, or did nobody apply? Are we able to attract qualified applicants at the salary that we're advertising?
I, I think, much like many of the, of specific things right now, while we're dealing with the, the investment in infrastructure, engineers are hard to find, period. So, getting someone who's interested in this kind of engineering, this is not the kind of engineering that people go to school for and think, you know, one of these days, I want to review permits and send them out. You know, if you're an engineer, you're looking to build things, you're looking to design things.
Don't be the guy that turns the ad for that.
Engineer back there laughing. I, I think that we have had departments come to us in the past when they were unable to find applicants to raise the salary. If, if somebody qualified does present themselves.
Yeah, we know, then that was something that we were looking at when we, we discussed it, but we haven't had any further feedback there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Was there any further discussion with this organization with you anytime soon? As far as what we're hearing from Mr.?
Daily, weekly?
I mean, do you talk to them periodically?
Anytime the president has had a problem, he's given me a call, I've spoken to him regularly. But the, um, the Conservation, the Conservation District Manager talks to me regularly. So, I'm aware of what's going on there. And we actually have hired two new staffers there.
Okay. Any other discussion?
When you're done with this one, I have a different one.
Okay. Any other things on that? Nothing? Okay. Mr. Gofredo is done? Ms. Hefner?
This past week and Monday, I attended two separate events at CCAP. I attended the board meeting last week and attended the Human Services Committee on Monday. As y'all know, we're in budget season with the state, and we're still pushing the need to speak to our legislators, especially our senators, about passing the base funding for mental health as well as 911. So, if any of you have existing relationships and can reach out to our local folks, it's really important. I think that the House did pass the measure on human services, although there's, I guess, there's some concern or questions because there's money shifted to funding mental health in schools. And CCAP, as well as the House, I think, is, is really looking at keeping it within the county to be able to be a pass-through to schools if we need. Because once it goes into education, there's no guarantee that it will actually be used for mental health services or how it would be used, whereas the counties really need that support. And so, there's separate bills being passed. I believe there was $100 million passed for adult mental health services. We still need youth mental health services, and the base funding is just a critical issue. So, um, I know we had other issues, but I think 911 is also one that we're looking to get moving on. And, um, what else can I say? The Resolutions Committee, I believe, July 1st is the last date to submit any resolutions for consideration for this year's annual meeting. So, if you have anything that you want them to vote on, please do so.
I have a question.
Go ahead with the second one.
Lori, had the Human Services, uh, CCAP's Human Services Committee, was there any discussion about children, youth, and family salaries, casework specifically? I mean.
What we did at this meeting was
Kick that can down the road for years.
Well, I think C cap keeps pushing and keeps talking about it, and we had the second half, like we did our platform, and that was on there, as well as all workforce issues across all of the mental health boards. But we met with the folks who were current under the Secretary Valar Kush. Val couldn't make it, but her deputy did. And we stressed that as well, the idea of that we all need more salaries as well as other retention mechanisms and ways to draw people into these jobs, because we're, we're all facing the same issues across the state. So it's discussed, it's a common problem. I can't say that there's any solutions.
I'm glad you did bring up the education part, though, because it seems like I know education is the hot issue now, and they want to put money in, but it's like rainwater evaporating on a, on a sidewalk on a sunny day. The money goes in, but there seems to be no mechanism for, for how it's going to be accounted for, whereas
Exactly.
At the county level, I mean, that's our, you know, I've said it nauseam, that's our main focus.
And you know, as well as I do, that, that it's not about having an antagonistic relationship with education. We didn't create the system, we didn't create the silos. But the governor's committed to making sure mental health is, is reached for children. He sees children as in schools and having those things there. What we know as service providers is, once they're in school and they're not in school in the summer, then what do you do? Or how do you do more outreach if they need more services than that half hour, one hour a week at school? So that's, we just want to make sure there's a strong continuum of care, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Serinski.
We had a Lehigh Valley Planning Commission Executive Committee meeting, and the significant thing that came out of that was the Pennsylvania Stormwater Management Act from 1978, Act 167. We're going to be applying for a global integrated water resource plan study, and that is through the DEP. This is really significant because this is where the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission has any regulatory power. And it's something that we've been trying to do for years, is to update this global watershed study. And our match will be 25%. Lehigh County has already provided their match. That means that the ball will be in our court once this Phase 1 grant is enacted. Also, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission will be hiring a new GIS planner, Jeff Carmazan. He will be starting soon.